Good morning, Commissioners. Over to you, Chair Harrington. Certainly, Chair Harrington, the Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is meeting this regular session June 3, 2025. Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Present.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Vice Chair Treese?
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Whoops, here. Turn my mic on. All right. Would everyone please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we have public communication. This is our first one of this meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with the Board for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Chair Harrington. We have a full five for the ten minutes this morning. The first two is Brenda Buonetti and Cynthia Munoz.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Harrington. My name is Brenda Barati, and I’ve lived in Washington County for 32 years. I’m talking today about my confidence in voting here in Washington County. I’ve been involved in observing how our elections work. Both my husband and I have been volunteering for six elections to help get out the vote in our neighborhood. I’m also a team leader overseeing about 30 other volunteers who are helping to get out the vote. I have never had any reason to suspect that non-citizens are voting or that they were dead. My voters in their 80s and 90s are the most reliable voters, and as I’ve stated previously before this body, the biggest issue is getting people to vote at all. I’ve also observed the collection of ballot boxes at 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. I noticed the election crew worked in teams. I also noticed that there were two other people besides us in another car who are also observing the collection. That boosted my confidence that the ballots were secure in the collection phase. I have also watched the processing and counting of ballots in the Washington County Elections Office. I saw the ballots get delivered, put into the machine, lots of volunteers at tables. My biggest takeaway? This is a very dull process. I saw no drama, nothing suspicious. I am aware that Dan Forster, Washington County’s Elections Division Manager, testified here in October. Mr. Forster has extensive prior experience in ensuring ballot tabulation accuracy. He addressed several questions about election security. He confirmed that none of the non-citizens who were mistakenly registered to vote by the DMV received ballots here in Washington County. The state found and corrected that error quickly. He noted that the software certified both by the state and the federal government. He made the point that the computers are not connected to the Internet, making it impossible for them to be hacked. I was very reassured by that. In summary, our system works, it’s safe, it’s secure.
Is Cynthia Munoz here?
Nope.
All right. The next two we have is Sandra Nelson and Dale Feek.
Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Sandra Nelson. I’m a resident of Washington County. During public comment time, we do hear different points of view, but one thing I hope we all share, each one of us wants to know the truth about what is being said, especially when decisions need to be made based on what we think to be true. So how do we determine what is true? I’ve thought a lot about this because it’s so basic to living a good life. I understand truth to be simply that which corresponds to objective reality. One critical aspect of knowing the truth is figuring out whom to believe. That’s not easy to do, especially today. With mass media and the advent of AI, it’s becoming increasingly difficult to sort out truth from lies, propaganda, and psy-ops. But bottom line, I still think it comes down to who is most trustworthy. Besides those with competence and skill, I think character matters the most. A scientist, for example, may be extremely knowledgeable and skilled, but if he manipulates his findings or hides the true results of his experiments, we could all be in trouble. Trustworthy people are committed to honesty and goodness, not by their own subjective standards, but by what God says is good. And if we discover people who we trusted did not tell the truth, then we are wise to be wary of such people. Let’s pray. Father in heaven, it’s very hard these days to know the truth, but you have said that you make known the truth. Please help us to know you and to be able to discern truth from falsehood and choose truth. We ask your special blessing and wisdom for our Commissioners who make consequential decisions based on what they believe to be good and true. In Jesus’ name. Amen.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I’m Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network, and Kevin has given you what I already emailed to you later earlier. I’m going to go directly to I sign my name, based upon what you said, Nancy. Sandra, Sandra Nelson, thank you. Justice and freedom, discussion and criticism, intelligence and character, these are the indispensable ingredients of the democratic state. We can be rich and powerful without them, but not for long. That’s very important, and I agree with what I just said. Thank you. Robert Wright, former Labor Commissioner, sends me emails daily. I read them. The last one was yesterday. He said, “How to protect our judges,” that we need to protect our judges. And he had major points. What should be done to protect our judges? Simplest solution would be for the Trump and his White House lockeys to avoid such vitriol in the first place. Two, Chief Justice Roberts must strongly rebuke Trump, Miller, Levitt, and any other members of the Trump regime who are using inflammatory language against federal judges. Three, the Judicial Conference of the United States, the national policy body of the federal courts, must also speak out strongly against such provocations. Four, Congress must increase the number of marshals assigned to protect judges, boost funding for their courthouse security, and strengthen legislation to shield judges’ home addresses from public view. Five, what can you do? Five actions that you can take now. And the longer document in what I sent you, you have those five actions. I’m going to do those five actions. I encourage you to make the telephone calls, do the writing, to take action to protect our judges, all judges. And I appreciate who was hired now as the General Counsel for the county, and I think he will, and I sent that to him. He’s not on until June 6, I understand that, but I want him informed, as well as all the attorney staff for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who’s next?
Next, we have Jill Latre, and then is there anyone else that wants to testify? We have one more open spot, anyone in the auditorium? Okay. Jill, you’ll be the last one.
Morning, Ms. Latre. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I’m a resident of Washington County. Today, I will continue to read from the Executive Order, Preserving and Protecting the Integrity of American Elections, signed March 25, 2025. Section 5, Prosecuting Election Crimes. To protect the franchise of American citizens and their right to participate in fair and honest elections, the Attorney General shall take all appropriate action to enter into information-sharing agreements to the maximum extent possible with the chief state election official or multi-member agency of each state. These agreements shall aim to provide the Department of Justice with detailed information on all suspected violations of state and federal election laws discovered by state officials, including information on individuals who registered or voted despite being ineligible or who registered multiple times, committed election fraud, provided false information on voter registration or other election forms, intimidated or threatened voters or election officials, or otherwise engaged in unlawful conduct to interfere in the election process. To the extent that any states are unwilling to enter into such an information-sharing agreement or to refuse to cooperate in investigations or prosecutions of election crimes, the Attorney General shall prioritize enforcement of federal election integrity laws in such states to ensure election integrity given in the state’s demonstrated unwillingness to enter into information-sharing agreement or to cooperate in investigations and prosecutions, and review the potential withholding of grants and other funds that the department awards and distributes in the department’s discretion to state and local governments for law enforcement and other purposes as consistent with applicable law. The Attorney General shall take all appropriate action to align the Department of Justice litigation positions with the purpose of this policy and order. We strongly encourage Oregon’s election officials to participate in the above information sharing. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next, we’ll move on to today’s consent agenda, which consists of 10 different items, one set of minutes for Clean Water Services Board of Directors, two items from Clean Water Services, one item from the Sheriff’s Office, one item from the combination of Cooperative Library Services, Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one item from Cooperative Library Services, one item from Health and Human Services, and three items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to today’s consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we’ll move on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have the opportunity to appoint a community member to the Planning Commission, and I have somehow misplaced my reminder notes on this. Does anyone have the packet open? Okay. Could you please read off that item, please? And who we’re appointing to the Planning Commission. It’s Luke, I think. Go ahead, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you. The requested action item is appoint Luke Peterson to the PC for the remainder of a four-year term expiring January 31, 2027.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, Chair Harrington, I move that motion.
Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And thank you, Luke, for not only applying, but for doing the service as a Planning Commission member. Next, we have two different proclamations. The first one is related to Clean Water Services to proclaim May 31 of this year as Skoggins Dam Safety Awareness Month. And we have Tracy Rainey, the Government Relations Manager from Clean Water Services, here with us to read today’s proclamation. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services. Would you like me to provide some short bracket or just jump into the proclamation? Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning and for the opportunity to acknowledge the importance of dam safety. As you know, the Tuauton Project, which includes both Skoggins Dam and Henry Hegg Lake, currently serves as our region’s primary water supply source, storing water for irrigated agriculture, municipal drinking water, industrial use, flood control, recreational purposes, fish and wildlife benefits, and for flow augmentation to maintain water quality in the Tuauton River. Skoggins Dam is a federally-owned facility. It was constructed in 1975, and in 2010, the Bureau of Reclamation completed a seismic evaluation and a corrective action study, which identified significant seismic vulnerabilities for the facility. Since that time, considerable work has been done to evaluate various design options that would address the seismic safety risks. It is our understanding that the Bureau of Reclamation is now looking to advance a seismic modification of the dam spillway, which is the most seismically vulnerable component of the overall facility. We are grateful to our federal delegation, especially Senators Wyden and Merkley and Congresswoman Bonamici, as they have been instrumental in helping to advance this project. We are also grateful for the leadership of our Board, both past and present, and the continued advocacy and collaboration from many local partners in the region to advance this project, which will protect the public and ensure the security of this important water source for our region. With that, I am happy to take any questions or move forward with reading of the proclamation. Okay. All right. Whereas failure of the South Fork Dam in Johnstown, Pennsylvania, in 1889 resulted in more than 2,200 deaths, and the worst dam failure in the history of the United States. And Federal Emergency Management Agency created National Dam Safety Awareness Day to promote individual and community responsibility for dam safety and to provide information on how to prevent future catastrophic dam failures. And whereas Skoggins Dam serves as one of the region’s primary water supply sources for drinking water and irrigated agriculture, as well as flood control, recreation, and water quality benefits. And whereas Skoggins Dam is an earthfill embankment dam that the Bureau of Reclamation identified in 2010 as one of the most seismically vulnerable dams within its inventory, with a high potential to collapse in an extreme seismic event such as the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, which represents both a public safety threat and a threat to the region’s water supply and economy. And whereas Washington County’s emergency management advises residents to sign up to receive emergency alerts, practice evacuation routes to higher ground, keep a go-bag packed and ready, and buy flood insurance. And whereas several local entities, including Clean Water Services, Tuauton Valley Irrigation District, and the Joint Water Commission, have worked with local partners to secure funding for addressing seismic risks at the dam, which will be funded through the Bureau of Reclamation’s Safety of Dams program. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this third day of June 2025, the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services does hereby proclaim May 31, 2025, as Skoggins Dam Safety Awareness Day. We call on all community members to understand the continued importance of dam safety, the role that we all play in staying safe from potential dam failure, and why investment in and patience during construction modifications of this infrastructure are so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, any questions, colleagues?
Can I ask, this probably not very fair to ask of you, but is the lake full? We’ve had a pretty mild winter, so are we okay this year?
That’s a fantastic question, Commissioner Willey. And yes, actually, in looking at the graphs that we get regularly, about every week or so, we are doing very well. We’ve actually had some pretty significant rain events, so even though it wasn’t maybe as many, they were significant enough that we are doing very well with that.
Yes, and we’ve started to have dam releases already. I think it was May 23. Terrific. So, colleagues, we have a proclamation that has been read to designate May 31 as Skoggins Dam Safety Awareness Day. Do we have a motion?
I move to proclaim May 31, 2025, as Skoggins Dam Safety Awareness Day.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Now, we did talk about saving ourselves a little time and not having a photo, but this is, we have very few proclamations for Clean Water Services, and this is the first one with our new acting chief executive officer. So if you wouldn’t mind, colleagues, Rick Shanley, welcome, and Tracy Rainey, if you wouldn’t mind joining us to take a photo, that would be great. Okay, that was first of two. The next one is to proclaim June, this entire month, as LGBTQIA2S+ Pride Month. Clerk Moss, who do we have speaking to this opportunity today?
We have your Access and Opportunity Director, Alicia Sojourner, and the other staff should be joining her at the table while they’re presenting.
Thank you, everyone. We’re excited to have you join us today. What amazing group, right? Yep.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Alicia Sojourner, Director of Access and Opportunity. I am honored to offer a few introductory remarks about Pride Month before I turn it over to our wonderful staff to read the proclamation. Washington County’s cultural heritage and identity celebration and resource pages are important starting point for our collective organization engagement in learning about everybody we serve in Washington County, as well as amplifying equity and inclusion. These celebrations offer an opportunity to enter into relationship with staff and community members who identify as two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and the many other identities within this community, to build trust and deepen our understanding of these diverse and growing communities here in Washington County. The celebrations also create an opportunity to learn about historic and present oppression of the LGBTQ+ community and the community’s resilience in the face of oppression, so that we can reflect on whether or not our current policies and the way we support and serve and amplify the well-being of every LGBTQIA community member and address historic and current barriers and exclusions. No, as I say all the time up here, no culture is monolithic, and the LGBTQIA+ community is no different, representing all races, ethnicities, religions, abilities, social-economic class, political leanings, nationalities, and a wide range of other identities, including life experience, opportunities, and history. And once again, LGBTQIA history is American history. The celebration and resource pages may not really paint the comprehensive picture of how widely diverse the queer community is, but it is a start for us to grow and learn. However, we do know that the Heritage Month committees are thoughtful about learning opportunities as they share with our Washington County community. We encourage people who may be curious about what is or is not presented or the policies of what we navigate and share this month. To reach out, those folks can reach out to us at the Office of Access and Opportunity and open, or open a dialogue with their colleagues. I would like to thank the dozens, and this is only representing a few, but the dozens of staff volunteers who have committed to meet throughout the year and plan and organize exciting opportunities to support our learning and celebrating the LGBTQIA+ community. Your commitment, Commissioners, to increase visibility and acceptance of all members of the queer community is extremely important, and we thank you for that. This year’s Pride Committee includes, I won’t read the whole list because there’s a number of folks, but I’ll let folks just quickly say their name up here, and then once everybody says their name quickly, I will turn it over to Cassandra Odell to actually read our proclamation.
Autry Medina Bowers.
I’m Highland Edelman.
Jacob Rosales.
Cassandra O'Donnell.
Wendy Sosha.
Ricardo Palazuelos.
Paul Riggs.
Thank you. I’ll actually be starting, so thank you for this opportunity. Whereas our country was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been too long in coming for many, including those who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit people. And?
Whereas an historic turning point in the movement toward equal rights for LGBTQ+ people occurred on June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, when LGBTQ+ community members rose up and fought back against brutal police raids and discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And?
Whereas the first LGBTQ+ Pride March took place one year after the Stonewall riots on June 28, 1970, to commemorate the events at Stonewall, launching what would become an annual nationwide tradition of pride celebrations every year since then. And?
Whereas we remember that the uprising at Stonewall was led by people of color and Black and Latinx trans community members of the LGBTQ+ community, and that past and present battles for racial and LGBTQ+ justice in this country were built on the shoulders of courageous changemakers like Jose Zaria, Maxine Perkins, Donna Burkett, Manonia Evans, Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, and as well as many others. And?
Whereas through the struggle for federal rights and protections for LGBTQ+ people persists, on June 11, 1999, Pride Month was federally recognized for the first time commemorating the 30th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising. And?
Whereas on June 24, 2016, the Stonewall Inn was designated as a national monument, forever preserving this historic site where the modern LGBTQ+ civil rights movement began. And?
Whereas in our country’s continuing struggle to seek justice for Black lives, our current Pride Month celebrations underscore the critical role that intersectionality plays in the fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning justice. And?
Whereas even with continued attempts at the local, state, and federal levels to enact oppressive legislation that threatens the rights, safety, and very lives of LGBTQ+ people, their struggle for dignity and equality is reflected in their tireless dedication to forge a more inclusive society, along with support from committed advocates and allies. And?
Whereas the great diversity and valuable contributions to our communities and enduring activism of the LGBTQ+ community can never be canceled or forgotten. And?
Whereas the.
We didn’t have that part written down. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this third day of June 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 25 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit-plus people Pride Month, and urge all community residents to eliminate discrimination and injustice wherever it exists, to celebrate the lives of our LGBTQIA2S+ neighbors and friends, and to work together to create a more inclusive society that values all people, no matter who they are and who they love, extending the promise of our country to all people. And that is today’s proclamation.
I enthusiastically move that we approve this proclamation.
And I enthusiastically second that motion.
All those who enthusiastically support said motion to adopt this proclamation, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Colleagues, would you please join our panel? Metta, thank you for being an invaluable member of our team who makes sure that we are always prepared but able to memorialize these occasions. Next, we're going to move on to public hearings. We have three today, and the first of which, all three come from Land Use and Transportation, so welcome. We'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Members of the Board. I'm Carol Johnson, Planning and Development Services Manager with the Land Use and Transportation Department, joined today by Trisha Garisco, Associate Planner with our organization. We are here to ask you to consider the annexation of one tax lot and portions of three tax lots totaling approximately 4.99 acres to the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. And Trisha is here to present the staff report. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I am Trisha Garisco, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary change 25-003, which is a request to annex one tax lot and portions of three tax lots into Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. Next slide, please. Oh, it's right here.
Sorry.
The subject properties are located in the city of Beaverton, inside the UGB. The properties total approximately 4.99 acres in size and are shown here in dark gray, north of southwest Shoals Ferry Road, west of 175th Avenue, and east of Tile Flat Road. The lighter gray area shows the current extent of the THPRD boundary in the vicinity. This proposal is a request by Holt Homes to annex one tax lot and portions of three tax lots totaling approximately 4.99 acres into THPRD in order to serve future development. This annexation request was initiated by a consent petition from the property owner, and county staff has reviewed the request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. If approved, staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation into THPRD, with the approval becoming effective today, June 3. If there is any public testimony today, there is a brief statement I will need to read into the record.
At this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing on this matter with regard to the annexation of one tax lot and portions of three tax lots totaling approximately 4.9 acres into the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify on this matter?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, let you just raise your hands. Start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you. And with that, I will close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation, with the approval becoming effective June 3, and to authorize the chair to sign the resolution and order for this service district annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, colleagues. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to another annexation from Land Use and Transportation, but this one pertains to the Service District for Lighting Number One Service District to approve changes and levy the assessment for this upcoming fiscal year 2025-2026 for a specific area. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ailey Langford. I'm the Senior Administrative Manager for Land Use and Transportation. I'm here with my colleague, Stacia Sheeler, to talk about the Northwest 111th Avenue partition. All right. So originally, when this partition was established back in May of 2022, it was established with two tax lots. There is currently one owner for both lots, and they're petitioning the county to remove the second lot from the assessment, as there's no benefit from the installed lights. And so staff is requesting the board to approve the removal of the second lot from the assessment and assess all the costs to the original lot. Uh, yes, it was up there.
Yeah. Going to pause for technical difficulties. Shazam, just like that.
And we're back. There you go. Okay, this slide displays the two lights depicted by the orange dots with the letter A, and the location in front of the original property on Northwest 111th Avenue. The second property on Northwest Rainmont Road does not benefit from these two lights. Come on, Vanna. It's not advancing to the next slide. Oh, yeah. Interesting. Okay. Well, I'll tell you what the next slide says. The next slide says, it's a photo that was depicting the street view of the two lights on Northwest 111. The two lights are directly in front of one property on Northwest 111. They are completely obstructed by large old growth vegetation, so there is no benefit to Northwest Rainmont. That is why we are requesting that the other lot be removed from the assessment area.
Terrific. Thank you. At this juncture, I would like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify on this matter?
I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report, just raise your hand. Start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the resolution and order with regard to amending the assessed area number 1392, and to establish the maximum annual assessment and impose a first-year assessment for this 111th Avenue partition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you for being thorough in your work. Next, we're going to move on to an entirely different matter, and this relates to economic development, and I would ask for a motion to read, have the second reading of this ordinance number 906 by title only. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Ms. Courtney Driesen, could you please read ordinance number 906 appropriately?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance 906, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 3.27 of the Washington County Code establishing a commercial property assessed clean energy, or CPACE program.
Thank you. And we have subject matter experts here for a short presentation before the public hearing.
We do. Thank you, Commissioners and Chair Harrington. I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Land Use and Transportation Director for the county, and I'm pleased that we now have Adrian Chalet, our Economic Development Manager, as a part of our department. So wanted to take an opportunity to welcome her to our team. And this was an ordinance that, as you mentioned, this is your second reading in a first public hearing today. The purpose of this ordinance would have been to terminate the CPACE program prior to its designated sunset date at the end of this calendar year. What we're suggesting today is really after your public hearing that you continue deliberation until September 2 to provide some additional time for consideration of that prior sunset recommendation. And we'll talk through a little bit about that in the briefing presentation. And then Adrian and I will be here after the presentation to answer any questions that you have or after the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it to Adrian.
Thank you, Stephen, and good afternoon. Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Chalet, Economic Development Manager with Land Use and Transportation. And I'm just going to provide a brief overview and review of the CPACE program and some of the work that we have done to date. CPACE, as a reminder, stands for Commercial Property Assessment for Clean Energy, and it's a real estate finance program that incentivizes clean energy. You can see examples of eligible building improvements to the right. And the primary goal set forth for CPACE was to promote resilience and sustainability of the built environment. It is a nuanced program, acting like an assessment where a property lien is recorded and a loan is paid back to a lender over time. We primarily engage with capital providers in this process, and it involves assessment and taxation, as well as close collaboration with county council. And Courtney will chime in as needed throughout the presentation. At the county, we adopted an off-the-shelf approach. However, recent research that we have been conducting has uncovered that there are opportunities to encourage specific criteria on types of projects. As you will see, all types of for-profit and nonprofit commercial properties are eligible. However, to date, we have completed two projects, and both of which are commercial, so we have not actually completed any multi-use or multifamily housing units. Here is the list of prior board actions that you all have taken, and I'm just going to hone in on the specific February 25 date, which is when we came to work session and presented a preliminary program assessment, which was a discussion of the original goals of the program, as well as highlighting the limited staff capacity at this time. And we are now at June 3, 2025, which was the date for the second ordinance reading and first public hearing as directed by your board. This is focusing in on the specific program assessment and the program sunset provision as directed by your board. And we have begun a more detailed process for the assessment. We did present to you all prior to the work session in February a memo that included analysis from my predecessor, as well as with input from county council. And we recognize that there are very specific requirements in the code that we would like to hone in on. I'll talk a little bit more about our recommendations there. So, a summary of the ordinance as filed, the ordinance would sunset the county's CPACE program prior to the original December 31, 2025 sunset date, and the reasons being, as we presented in work session, a lack of sufficient ongoing staff resources to adequately administer the program, which is tied to the elimination of the economic development FTE, as well as a limited utilization of the program. We have had multiple inquiries. However, as I mentioned, we've only had two projects closed to date. And in addition, we are exploring and having conversations about the type of development and ensuring that it is in alignment with the values set forth by your board for the program. And so if the county pauses or sunsets the CPACE program, just a reminder that all projects will continue until the loan is satisfied with minimal staff time. So our recommendation is a continuance. As Stephen mentioned, we have begun a more comprehensive assessment process as required per code, and this includes more comprehensive engagement. We've already kicked this off and have been meeting with various CPACE stakeholders, including developers and capital providers, as well as program administrators. And we're researching targeted approach to outreach. This is informing some of our recommendations that we will come back to you with. And then, we are also undergoing a thorough analysis of the costs associated with the program with our A&amp;T staff, as well as county council. So just a sneak peek of our initial recommendations that we are exploring through this engagement. This includes education marketing campaigns in partnership with our local jurisdictions and other developers, reaching developers who are interested in sustainability, including our partners in housing, as an example, and then a more detailed administrative process that aligns with the CPACE application checklist to minimize disruptions and overall workflow for staff and maximize our staff capacity. So I'll have Courtney chime in here, too, as needed. But we recommend conducting the second reading and first public hearing. Receive any testimony closing the hearing, and then we would like to continue deliberations on the ordinance on September 2.
Okay. Commissioners, is everyone clear on what we're doing today? Okay, I don't think we need to belabor it any, at all. So, at this juncture, I'd like to open a second public hearing. Anyway, I'm opening the public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would Mr. Feek?
Chair Harrington Dale Feek, resident of Washington County since 1966. There was a training at Brookwood Library on Saturday, May 31, training how to get people more involved in local, city, county, and state governance, and how people can get engaged. And that was very informative. There were Representative Nathan Sosa spoke, Senator Janine Solomon spoke, Hillsborough City Councilor Christine Segato spoke, and esteemed Commissioner Nafisa Phi spoke there. The reason I'm saying this is Trump and his regime is eliminating staff from EPA. As you also know, I'm very seriously concerned about the environment, land, earth, water. And unless we have good government funded well, people willing to take risks to do good for the common good, we aren't going to work very well. In what Representative Nathan Sosa said, "Support local government." Eighty percent of the bills passed at the state legislature are nonpartisan. Republicans and Democrats are working together because they need to cooperate and decide what's best to provide services. And that's what you do as a county. And that's also what I see that you're doing in supporting CPACE. We have to have sound, effective government looking out for the environment and the people that live in it. So I totally support whatever it is I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
Is there anyone else in the auditorium that should provide comment? Not seeing any raised hands or anyone coming forward. Any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to close this public hearing for today and ask for a motion to continue deliberation on ordinance number 906 to date certain. ask for a motion to continue deliberation on Ordinance Number 906 to date certain February 2, 2025. September 2, 2025. What's the...
February 2.
Oh, good heavens, I really... I'll fix that one up. So let me start that again. I would ask for a motion to continue deliberation of Ordinance Number 906 to date certain September 2, 2025.
I moved.
My colleague Jerry Willie always saves me from my date faux pause, so.
I moved it, so.
Second.
Thank you, colleagues. All those in favor of this motion, could we just do a roll call real quick?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Phi?
Hi.
Vice Chair Treese?
Yes.
Chair Harrington.
Yes, thank you. The motion was unanimous, five to zero, and when it comes to ordinances, I always try to make sure we do roll call vote, so we never have a problem. Okay, next, we're moving to the action agenda for today, and we have three different items, quite a varied day today. So this next one is with regard to clean water services. So I would ask staff to come up and then our acting CEO and Chief Engineer and Water Technology Officer, Rick Shanley, if you could introduce this item, please.
Yes, we'd like to talk about an engineering contract for a renewable natural gas project.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Hi, I'm Bruce Gordon, Business Opportunities Manager. We were last before the board on May 13th talking about this project, and today we have a contract for design services that we're asking the board to approve. And before we get into that, though, I'd like to just go over very quickly what we went over last time. So we talked about renewable natural gas and how it differs from fossil fuel-based gas and what environmental advantages it has over fossil fuel gas. We talked about RNG business models. We talked about the fact that for a while, we were looking at a model where clean water services would just sell the gas to someone, and they would take care of treating the gas, putting it into the local utility pipeline, and selling it to someone or using it for their own purposes. We mentioned that we had a difficult time making that kind of a project model work for us economically, and so we are changing course and now pursuing a project where we will build the project, fund it, operate it, and so forth. We talked about RNG markets and how all RNG buyers fall into one of two categories. They're either compliance buyers, which means that they're required by government regulations to purchase renewable natural gas, or they are voluntary market buyers, in which case they're buying the gas voluntarily to serve their own sustainability or greenhouse gas reduction needs. We talked about how we had resumed discussions with Northwest Natural Gas after suspending them about a year ago, and Northwest Natural Gas also had someone testify to the board and talk about how important RNG is for Northwest Natural's future. And we also talked about economic modeling that we had done based on the concept design that we had. This showed a 20-year net present value for different gas sales scenarios, and happily, each scenario yielded a positive net present value, although those values varied considerably from scenario to scenario. Also, at our May 13 meeting, the board approved a series of next steps for us, which I'll just go over very quickly. One was to investigate alternative RNG technologies. When we talk about the technology, we're usually talking about the treatment system to bring the gas up to pipeline standards. There are a number of longstanding technologies for this, and there's also one that we recently became aware of that's brand new, that if it really works, will really save a lot of money. So we're currently investigating that, and we will report to you on that down the road. We also were given permission to investigate opportunities to reduce capital and operations and maintenance costs. One part of that that we're looking forward to is learning from Northwest Natural about his experience with RNG projects and some of the pitfalls that they've encountered and ways to avoid them. Also, Rick will talk about this a little bit more when it's his turn to talk about this design contract, but suffice to say that whenever we talk about progressive design at each of the various stages of the design process, we're always looking for ways to reduce costs and so forth.
Point of clarification on this slide, we don't approve things in work sessions, but we do provide direction.
Okay.
So our direction was supportive of the next steps. Thank you.
The board approved us determining the RNG sales business model. We haven't determined that yet. We have...I'm sorry. Oh, I'm...yes. My faux pas. The board gave us positive direction on pursuing an RNG sales business model, and so we are currently working on that. We have several options to choose from. Also, discuss potential contract terms with Northwest Natural, which is an ongoing process, and to continue work on the project design, which is what Rick will be talking about with the next slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I will say at your direction, we've continued to have great dialogue with Northwest Natural Gas and have made good strides in that area. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the specifics to advance this project forward. So we are proposing to use Hazen and Sawyer. They are our consultant on our mass...we call them price agreement list at this point in time. They were selected sometime back to look at the conceptual design and feasible alternatives for what to do with our biogas, and based upon their work and their experience and the team they have provided, we'd like to continue to utilize that firm as we move forward. The contract includes design services, assistance with procuring the renewable natu...that's a hard term to say, renewable natural gas, equipment, and construction and bid phase services. The price is a not-to-exceed value of $1,050,219. Can someone advance? Thank you. So we want to be very clear that as we progress, we want to go as quickly as possible, but we do feel this is a project that provides economic value, and so it's important that we come back to the board and give you updates. As we get further and further in design, our numbers get much more accurate, and we want to keep you informed as we progress of the different value engineering options that we might have to propose, as well as confirming the economics are still as positive as they are today. So we have milestones identified at the 30%, 60%, and 90% completion points, and those would be potential milestones to bring back this project to you. If things change significantly, we can off-ramp and go to a different approach. The updates would also include some of the things that Bruce has talked about with the business sale model, the contract term sheet with Northwest Natural Gas, and our ongoing negotiations, as well as the technology selection. So we will be doing a pre-purchase of the technology. We'll look at the pros and cons, both economically and non-economically, and present the chosen technology early in the project. I won't go through the schedule in detail, but it highlights the milestone dates that we've talked about. It does mention the RNG equipment repurchase. One of the key components to doing pre-purchase is we can do the project faster. So because this is a rate generating project, it also has great environmental value, we would like to get this one done as quickly as possible. And so we're targeting producing renewable natural gas early in 2028. With that, I'll turn it over to questions.
Great, if I could kick off the questions. So the contract that you have with proposing with Hazen and Sawyer would take us all the way through? Does it take us through all of the 90% design?
It will take us to 90% to final design, actually producing the bid documents, construction documents, bidding the project, and getting a contractor onboard.
Great, great. I wanted to make sure it wasn't just a 30 and another one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, terrific. Colleagues, any other questions? No? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve Task Order Number 14 to master contract for wastewater treatment engineering services with Hazen and Sawyer DPC for the Rock Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Biogas Utilization Project Number 7307.
I move to approve.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, colleagues. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much for the thorough presentation in May and following through with this contract. Onward we go. Great, we're going to move on to our second action item, and this one comes to us from Health and Human Services. Could we have a motion to read Ordinance Number 907 by title only, please?
So move.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Ms. Duke Driesen, could you do the honors, please?
Yes, Chair Harrington. Ordinance 907, an ordinance revising Chapter 804 of the Washington County Code relating to certificate fees.
And we just had a presentation on this matter in our work session this morning. So for reference, please feel free to look at that material and watch the video right And I didn't bring my notes for when we take action. It's in a couple of weeks.
So, Madam Chair, you'd be looking for a motion to continue Ordinance 907 for a second reading and first public hearing on June 24.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Wasn't in my notes.
What he just said.
We have a motion for the action next steps that Clerk Moss read for us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. We'll see you at a subsequent meeting, as covered earlier. Next, we're going to move on to two of our local option levies. We've done work through steering committees. I want to thank my colleagues, Jason Snyder, Commissioner Phi for being our liaisons for the Public Safety Levy, and Vice Chair Treese and Commissioner Willie for being the liaison for the Washington County Library Cooperative Services for the WCCLS levy. And at this juncture, we've done a lot of work, and our staff has a presentation to cover that. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Philip Bransford, he him pronouns, Communications Officer with the County Administrative Office. I'm joined to my left...
Erin Calvert, Assistant County Administrator.
Lisa Tattersall, WCCLS Manager.
We see that it's about five minutes after 11:00, and you have an exec session scheduled. We have conferred about a warp speed approach to this presentation, but it's up to your board how you'd like us to use your time.
We want to make sure you go through the material.
You got it.
Don't do the old FedEx man talking super...
No.
...super fast. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of today's presentation, we have preliminary ballot language for both the library and public safety levies as part of your packet today, and we would love to check in on the timeline with you. The questions for the board include, does the board approve of the preliminary ballot titles and explanatory statements for both levies? And does the board wish to convene a public hearing and consider referring both measures to the voters for the election on November 4 of this year? And whoops, let me back up real quick. There it is. So you have grown familiar, I think, with this chart. We're here in this red circle. The main takeaway, we're doing levy proposal work right on top of getting ready for that voter outreach to the community. Those are happening on top of one another, but we're starting to lean more and more into outreach, so we have more to come in that regard. But that's essentially what this chart is attempting to show. And with that, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Lisa Tattersall.
Hello, Chair and Board. Thank you for the conversation last week about the preliminary levy proposal at your work session and subsequent approval. I'm going to just dive in. The library levy provides key funding for our cooperative library system in Washington County. Public library service is delivered by a partnership between our county, nine cities, and three nonprofit organizations. WCCLS is a department of the county and provides funding, support services, and critical infrastructure to link these independently operated libraries into one county-wide system that is available for all residents. The current library levy provides 45% of the revenue for WCCLS in fiscal year 2425. The current levy rate is 22 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, and the current levy expires in June 2026. The ballot language before you today recommends replacing the current 22 cent levy with a 15 cent increase to 37 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. The new levy, if referred by your board, to be on the ballot in November 2025, and if approved by voters, would be effective July 26 through June 31. The proposed library levy replacement would help maintain and provide access to core services, including reading and learning support for kids and teens, including homework help for students, central services that efficiently link libraries together so users can browse collections and reserve materials for pickup at their nearest library, open hours, and access to books and materials for everyone in the community, and children's reading events, including storytimes. The ballot materials for your consideration today are for a levy replacement rate of 37 cents. We estimate the total five-year revenue at $188.9 million, and estimate that the first year revenue in fiscal year 2627 would be $34.7 million. For the average homeowner in Washington County, the first year's estimated levy cost would be around $129, and the estimated monthly cost in the first year for that same average homeowner would be about $10.75. Please note this is the total cost if voters vote to replace the 22 cent levy with the proposed 37 cent levy. The annual increase in cost for the average homeowner would be just over $54 per year or an additional $4.55 per month. This slide shows that the two rounds of polling of likely voters done in January and then in May show steady support for a replacement levy at the 37 cent rate. Does your board have any questions about the library levy preliminary ballot title or explanatory statement?
Any questions at this juncture? Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I'm Erin Calvert for the record, and I'll jump right in as well. Thank you again for your conversation and approval of the preliminary proposal last week. The next cycle of the Public Safety Local Option Levy will also cover July 1 of 2026 through June 30 of 2031. The levy provides critical funding for the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, Community Corrections, and Juvenile Services. Each of these departments playing a distinct but interdependent role in maintaining public safety in Washington County. The current Public Safety Levy provides about 16% of the revenue for the public safety system in fiscal year 202425. The current rate is 47 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, and the current levy expires in June of 2026. Levy funds will continue the core functions of public safety, and this measure will enhance funding for a wide range of countywide public safety services that include prosecuting child abuse and child pornography cases, combating the impact of deadly drugs like fentanyl, and dismantling drug traffic organizations, preventing domestic violence, and expanding emergency assistance for victims harmed by it, fully funding the jail to keep those with more dangerous charges in court-ordered custody, and investigating and prosecuting theft, car theft, break-ins, and graffiti, as well as preventing crime with mental health response teams, job training, employment, and addiction services to keep youth and adults from returning to the justice system. This proposal recommends a levy replacement rate of 66 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This estimates the total five-year revenue at just over $329 million, and estimates the first year revenue in fiscal year 202627 at just over $60 million. For the average homeowner in Washington County, this first year's estimated levy cost would be around $230, and the estimated monthly cost in the first year for that same average homeowner would be about $19.17. Please note also, this is a total cost. If voters vote to replace the 47 cent levy with the proposed 66 cent levy, the annual increase in cost for the average homeowner from the current levy would be about $90 or an additional $7.45 average per month. This slide also provides some historical context of polling predictions in blue and election outcomes in green, with the last four blue bars on the right noting the current polling efforts. The takeaway message also being that there is steady voter support from the last two polling efforts for this increased levy. And with that, does the board have any questions regarding the public safety levy? And with that, does the board have any questions regarding the public safety levy preliminary ballot title or explanatory statement?
Just checking in. Nope, seeing none.
Thank you.
Very good. So just a reminder about next steps. We are here on June 3rd. Thank you for your consideration about this preliminary ballot material. As your board is aware, we'll do yet another round of voter survey work those last two weeks in July, and we're on your rolling calendar for results that we will report out to your board on August 5th. So the plan here would be to come back to your board for final adoption and referral of both measures. That would allow us to use the material that you would consider approving today in our communication efforts. But in terms of official action for filing the measures, that actually would not happen until August 12th, which would allow you to be informed by that last round of voter survey work. So thank you again. The takeaway is here, preliminary proposals, both levies approved, as my colleagues have pointed out, and you've reviewed back on the 27th of May. Voter support is holding steady. Does your board approve of the preliminary ballot titles and explanatory statements? And would your board consider convening that public hearing to adopt and refer the measures to the November 4th, 2025 election? Again, that would be a public hearing on August 12th.
Thank you, staff. So colleagues, I just want to say that I did not realize at our last meeting on this subject that the filing of these measures would be delayed until August. So we really have two choices to make here today, and the reason that it's pertinent is with regard to the work that needs to be done away from the dais work to support the two campaigns. So one alternative is to move forward with scheduling a public hearing sooner rather than later, and subsequently having the filing done sooner, continuing on with the third voter survey so that we really feel like we've got that final pulse of the community before the November ballot, giving the level of news that seems to happen each and every day this year so far. But we've clearly done the work to define for each of these arenas what it is necessary for the future five years, what that will involve cost-wise, and all of the details related to that. So I would just like to open the floor up, especially to the two different sets of liaisons, to say, do you have what you need in order to move forward? And do you want to do the public hearing and filing sooner? Or do you want to do that later, which would complete the process August 12th?
And just to clarify what you're proposing about the timing, if we were to move sooner, that would not preclude us from either withdrawing something, either withdrawing entirely or refiling something before the August deadline for filing measures, correct?
Yep, that's right.
I think it's an important component for everybody to understand when thinking about this.
Yep. I thank you, Chair, for framing this in a situation where we look at what our options are, and I'm in favor of filing sooner so that we have, we can move forward with the other things that we need to do.
I'd agree with that.
So do I.
So at this juncture, as staff has pointed out for us, they're looking for a motion to convene the public hearing and to consider referring both measures to the voters for election on November 1, 2025. So that is work. We have a couple more business meetings out into the year, but I would like to ask for a motion to direct our staff to move forward with the sooner option rather than the later option, to convene the public hearing and consider referring both measures to the voters accordingly.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. So we understand you'll be coming back to us. We'll have the public hearing and go that way. Yes? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you for all of the thorough work, not only for the three of you and the steering committee colleagues, but also all of the other subject matter experts who have been involved to date. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to our, that's it for the three different action items. We'll move on to our second public communication period. Clerk Moss, how many folks do we have signed up today?
We just have two in the room signed up.
Thank you.
All right. So they are Mr. Bob Stewart and Jackie Pop.
Go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to make my argument before you today. I really appreciate it. I want to establish, first of all, my credibility as a witness. I'm a retired physician. I spent 43 years in patient care, board-certified internist. I've been an ER doctor, ICU doctor, hospital doctor, clinic doctor. The last 15 years I spent as a federal employee, working for the Veterans Administration. I want to make two points today. One, that cutting Medicaid will kill Americans. And number two, cutting Medicaid will cause suffering in millions of Americans. The first point, Obamacare established Medicaid expansion to all the states in 2014. There was like 24 states that accepted, but not all the states accepted the Medicaid. There were initially 21 states that refused Medicaid. Why did they do that? Here's a hint. They were all Republican governors. They were all white men. Okay? That's an important thing to establish. Well, Obamacare went ahead, and some people accepted Medicaid, some didn't. Well, some enterprising physicians at Harvard decided to study this. Well, what's going to, now we have a laboratory experiment. We have states that accepted the Medicaid and states that didn't. Why don't we look and see if there's a difference in mortality? And they did that study. It's called Mortality and Access to Care among Adults in State Medicaid Expansions by Ben Summers, New England Medical Journal. Second study by Sam Dickman, Opting Out of Medicaid: The Health and Financial Impacts. What did they find? Well, the argument, remember, the Republicans' argument is always, they can go to the emergency room. Remember that? And everybody says, yeah, they won't die. They can go to the emergency room. Well, we, as physicians, we know that's nonsense, because by the time they go to the emergency room, then maybe too late. And for instance, they found that in Florida, they rejected Medicaid, 2,000 people died a year. In Texas, 3,000 people died a year. So it's scientifically proven that if they cut Medicaid, people are going to die. The second point, untold suffering by millions of people. As you know, or don't know, most suffering happens behind closed doors. If you go to a hearing like this, you walk to the mall, you go shopping, you go to business, you don't see people suffering. Who sees the medical suffering? Physician, the nurse, the social worker, the pastor, the guy that's cleaning the hospital, the hospital workers. They see the suffering. And so it's easy to say, we can not take care of people, they won't suffer. But we know that they will. Example one, high blood pressure. I know a case personally where the gentleman was like 57 years old. He never went to the physician. He came in with a blood pressure, he was comatose, came in with a blood pressure over 200, had a brain hemorrhage, and eventually had to go to a nursing home. All that could have been prevented if he had had a regular physician, like most places in the world have healthcare for their people. We don't, and had his blood pressure taken care of. Diabetes. If you detect it early, you prevent all these complications. So my argument is that cutting Medicaid is going to kill people, and cutting Medicaid is going to cause suffering in thousands, millions of Americans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Ms. Popham. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. First of all, I want to say that we've noticed that today the agenda was really full, lots for you to do, and so therefore we reserved several of our topics for another reading date. It has been stated numerous times and from a variety of sources that vote by mail increases voter turnout. However, the data obtained from the Oregon Secretary of State's website does not support that claim. The following chart and graph display the numbers and percentages of voter turnout from 1960 to 2024. And I'm looking at the last page of your packet, of the graph, that is a colored graph. The voter turnout graph shows the following. The left side represents voter turnout percentages ranging from 50% to 90%. The bottom represents the years 1960 to 2024. The blue is in-person voting, followed by the transition period where vote by mail was being tested around the state, and the full adoption of vote by mail in Peach. The green represents the years when voters were not required to pay the return postage. As you can see, the highest voter turnout in the state was in 1960, when the turnout was 86.51%. The next highest voter turnout was in 2004, when the percentage was 86.48%. Since 2004, the voter turnout has decreased. The voter turnout for the general elections from the Oregon Secretary of State website shows that vote by mail has, in fact, not increased voter turnout. And with this chart that we have, another topic I'd like to address was the presentation of data during public testimony. It really would be helpful if we could get it up on the screen, and I know that there must be some technical reason why that can't happen, but it does say that in order to present that we could get in touch with the clerk to possibly do that, and so we would like to have that possibly to go forward. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good rest of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Popham, and thank you for the handout information as well. And that completes today's public comment section for today's meeting. Next, I'll move on to board announcements. Welcome to the month of June, everyone. Later this week, on Friday evening, June 6, we'll be having a meeting of three county commissions, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, and the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners, in order to agree upon a replacement person to represent House District 26 at the state legislature. That will be a Zoom-only meeting, starting at 6:30 PM this Friday. Next Tuesday, June 10, is just full-on work session day at this juncture. Let me check in for a moment. Okay, so next Tuesday, we'll start our work sessions at 9:00, and then reconvene in the afternoon for our two different boards. On Thursday, not Tuesday, June 12, on Thursday, June 12, there will be a roundtable meeting starting at 9:00 AM that day. Once again, another full day. On Tuesday, June 17, it's going to be just a jam-packed day. We'll start with a work session at 9:00 AM. We'll pause that, reconvene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors at 10:00, where we will be considering the Housing Authority budget for the next fiscal year. Then, after that finishes, we will convene in our board meeting. Something's listed twice. And in the board meeting, we'll be having our multiple public hearings on all of our different budgets, for Service District for Lighting and Washington County combined, the combined ESPD, URM-D, and that's the list. But a lot of public hearings, because we have to do all kinds of levies of taxes. Anyway, the following Tuesday, Vice Chair Treese will be running that meeting. That will be the last Tuesday of the month, so the work session will start at 2:00 PM, and the board meeting will be in the evening at 6:30 PM. And then there's the month of July. We don't usually hold meetings the week of the Independence Day holiday, July 4. So Tuesday, July 1, don't show up, because we won't be here. So that's it for the month of June. Are there any other board announcements for today? Nope. Seeing none, we will be adjourning this meeting in a moment, and then the Clean Water Services Board of Directors will move to executive session at about 11:30. So do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting for Tuesday, June 3, 2025?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. We're adjourned.